All. All right. So first item, as is typical, is a review of our minutes. Do we have any questions or comments?
I move for approval of the November 17th, 2021 and December 15th, 2021 minutes.
Have a second? Second. All those in favor, raise your hand.
One, two, three. Smart, I can't see you. You'll have to come off mute. Jamie, if you can vote, I can.
Oh, sorry.
You make four and I can pass it four, zero, zero, four, zero, one.
All right. So as most of us know, this evening, we have a special presentation by Ridwell. And I know we all eagerly awaited this from last time. So is Caleb, I didn't look at the participant list. Is Caleb with us again tonight?
Yeah, he's with us.
All right. There he is. Hi Caleb. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
You bet. My pleasure. Thank you all so much for having me here. I really appreciate everybody's time.
Of course. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to you to kind of get us started on your presentation. And then I'm sure we all have lots of questions.
You bet. Let me see if I'm able to share my screen very quickly. Let me know if you all can see that.
Yes.
Right? Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you all so much for the opportunity to chat with you all this evening. I will try to move through the presentation very quickly since I have a feeling lots of folks are generally familiar with, with Ridwell and who we are and what we do, but it's always good to start with sort of a quick overview of what our company does and why folks are out there chatting about us at the moment. So that we can then have a conversation about what the best policy might look like going forward that would enable us to hopefully begin serving the residents of King City. So I'm going to start with sort of just a high level, you know, this challenge of hard to recycle items is something that has been an issue for, for many, many years. And as I'm sure you all know well, there's a number of items that are not included in the co-mingled recycle bins that are picked up by the garbage haulers that provide the curbside recycle service. And there's lots of very good reasons why that's the case. They cause problems in the sorting machines. They cause fires. They're hazardous to the workers. So these are, these are materials that are fairly common, particularly in the case of plastic film, very common batteries, light bulbs as well, things that people use all the time. But they are challenged to dispose of. And then this is, this is not a new challenge that we've, that we're facing in this space. That challenge has sort of gotten worse over the last decade with China soared and China basically said, hey, look, we're cleaning up the waste stream. We're not going to accept a lot of the stuff that we've been taking. So less so for the hazardous batteries and light bulbs, but more for plastics, including plastic film. There were a number of items that suddenly there weren't markets for. So even if they were part of the curbside service, there was no longer a place to, to dispose of those to, for recycling after China made their policy change. So one family sort of response to this challenge of the shrinking group of items that were, the group of materials that was recyclable through the curbside service was the Metzger family in Seattle. And you can see here are some pictures of Owen, who is our founder and CEO's son. And they started just taking stuff to drop off locations around the city of Seattle. And again, we are, we're very open. A lot of the materials that are included in our service, there are drop off options. Some are more convenient than others, but there are places that people can take them. The challenge is that people may not know where they are, or they're just really busy. And I put myself in that category. It's one of the reasons why Ridwell really made sense to me when I first heard about it here in Seattle. I'm a resident of Seattle. I've carried a box of batteries literally from house to house. I knew I couldn't throw them away. I knew I could take them to the transfer station and drop them off, but I always forgot. I didn't remember. And then I had more batteries and literally had an overflowing box of batteries. And so what Ryan and his son did was they were taking stuff to drop off. They asked their neighbors if they had any of these things that they'd like them to take with them when they went to drop off. And they got such a good response that they're like, oh, maybe we'll try that again. We'll post it on next door and see if anybody else in the neighborhood would, would like some help with these, with these items. And then they had such a response there that they ended up having to sort of build a list. And so it turned into what they called Owen's List. And they enlisted some of those initial neighbors to help them deal with these, these drop offs. And so they were going around. And over the course of a few months, it became clear that there is a lot of residents, again, whether they have limited mobility, or they're just busy, or they didn't know, or they didn't know where to find out, that they really appreciated the help of just making it easier to take these items and get them reused and recycled. And so that was, that was the idea behind it. And so from there, again, that was thousands of people in the Seattle area that joined Owen's List really through just next door connections and hey, can you take my stuff? And so Ryan then created Ridwell to, to say, hey, look, this is a service that we think people would appreciate. And if we can turn this into a real business that I'm not doing out of my garage, maybe we can help a lot more people. And the idea was just to keep it really simple. So we use reusable sorting bags. We are, we don't operate a Murph. We are not sorting a bunch of materials. We have very simple instructions that this is, this is the stuff that is part of our service, not other stuff. This is the only stuff. This is the bag that it goes into. And then we offer a subscription. We offer a pickup every other week. And so we only go to houses when they tell us they have something for us to pick up. The majority of members do opt in for each available pickup. But we don't want to be driving empty vans. We use Sprinter vans. We're not using big trucks because that doesn't make any sense for the nature of our service. And, but we only go to those houses that say, hey, look, we, we've got something for you this week. Please come by on my designated pickup day. What do we, what do we offer for pickup? So it varies. And you're going to hear me say this a few times because it's really important. And sometimes it gets lost. Our service varies a little bit depending on what is included in the curbside programs. So we, and you're seeing an image here in a second, but I want to say it a few times. We are not interested in anything that can go in the curbside program. We're not trying to compete with the garbage haulers. We have no interest in doing that. They're long businesses that, that have been doing that work for, for many, many years. That's not what we're doing. We, we're sort of saying, hey, look, there's this other group that for a number of good re, another group of materials for a number of reasons are not part of that service. So how can we make it easier for that? So the hard to recycle items are very important. However, the reuse is actually the majority of the categories that we offer. So we offer four standard categories plus a rotating. And one of those is reuse. It's threads, batteries, light bulbs, plastic film and threads. And then we offer a whole lot of reuse opportunities. And so the idea there is that people have stuff around their house that they're not using, that usually just sits there until spring cleaning or they move. And at that point, they hire a junk hauler, take it to, take it to the transfer station to dispose of it. And so the idea is rather than waiting for that moment, we can identify local organizations that could use those, that could put those materials to good use. And then make that connection. So we let our members know, hey, there is an organization that is serving the unhoused in the community. They really need jeans. Do you have any extra jeans sitting around? And, you know, or an organization, a book bank, like we need, this organization needs kids books. Parents, do you have any kids books? So those kinds of opportunities where we sort of do that backend research to help identify what are those reuse opportunities that exist. And then for the hard to recycle items, we aren't, as I mentioned, we aren't sort of collecting anything that people have. It's sort of the opposite. We know that there's specialized recyclers out there that can take separated products. So for instance, to take on, take plastic film for a second. One of the challenges with plastic film is that even in the drop boxes at your local grocery stores, we can take it. It often goes in wet and contaminated. And so what the recycler actually gets is not usable because it's too contaminated or it's covered with mold. Because people, they're really not paying attention quite enough. And again, it's one of the challenges with that material. Because the people that are subscribing to our service are very interested in trying to do a little bit more and do the right thing. They actually take that extra step to ensure that those materials actually can be recycled. So we're, we're able to get this sort of stream of materials that are very challenging to these specialized recyclers. Everybody we work with is located in the United States. We, we see it as our job to make sure that folks know. I'll mention this later, but we're very transparent. We have, we publish on our website exactly where all of the materials go. So there's nothing hidden. If you want to know where your stuff is going, we want you to know. We want people to have faith that by doing a little bit more, they can do their part to reduce waste. So I mentioned this, but again, I'm coming back to it because it's so important. This is, this is for Clackamas County, but you get the idea. You know, the materials that we are focused on, right, are the ones that are, that people are being instructed to put in the garbage container. We are not interested in any of the things that can be recycled as part of the curbside program. So our only focus, and again, we don't take all of these, what are emphasized. We only take ones where we know that there is somebody who takes, we don't, we don't offer to collect anything until we have a partner that we are confident is going to responsibly reuse or recycle the items that are part of our service. So I mentioned this, you know, we, we do our routes every day and we only go to those houses where they have said that they have items for us to pick up. We use Sprinter vans again, because we are getting these bags of material that are already source separated. We're not going to every single house on the block and we're only going through a given neighborhood once every other week, you know, so we're really trying to limit the environmental impact and certainly any sort of traffic impacts that we might have by adding vehicles to the road because we're only going through a neighborhood every other week. And we are only stopping, going down the streets where somebody said that they want us to come. This is what our warehouse looks like. So after we collect the items, this is actually a picture of our Portland warehouse. You can kind of see again, we're not sorting every, we're not sorting anything. We're really just sort of taking the bags and emptying them and preparing them for transportation for reuse or recycling. So often it's, you know, putting things in the, in the big boxes or in the Gaylord's to, for transportation to our local partner. The one thing that we do a little bit more at our facility is, is bailing of the plastic film because it just needs to be scrunched down. But beyond that, we're not really doing any processing when we're really just taking it and getting it to our partners. I will mention at this point, you know, we, after discussions with both Metro and with DEQ, we have applied for the permits that they have indicated they thought were appropriate for this facility. I'll say this again later, we are not opposed to regulation. We just didn't understand how these things fit. And, you know, as these folks know, we reached out to all of them before we started operating. And we were initially told, oh, no, 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 you're not operating a Murph. You're not sorting, none of this applies to you. They came back later and said it does. So we went ahead and applied. And again, we're not, we're trying to get out of anything. It just, what, because a lot of the rules weren't written with a service like ours in mind, they don't fit all that well. And so trying to sort of navigate, you know, what the best approach is there. Our partners that we then take the items to, we try to stay as local as possible. If there's local partners, those are the ones that we're going to use. Again, this is just a small sampling of some of our Portland area partners. Unfortunately, plastic film, there's nobody local. So and really there's only one person nationally, to be honest, that is really doing plastic film work the way that we feel good about. And that's Trex. And they do composite decking. Green Impact Plastics is our partner for plastic clam shells. They are also honestly sort of on the cutting edge of making plastic clam shells a recyclable item. They work with sort of the big name fruit packers and others that you might have heard of to provide them with recycled material for their, for their clam shells. Again, real focus on community, you know, our goal is to help, help address the gaps that exist in the system and the needs that local organizations and local households have. So, you know, whether it's the books for the children's book bag, the community warehouse, kitchenware donation, you know, our, our goal really is to, to be that bridge between the organizations that need items and households that, that have them. Fully transparent, this is a screenshot from our transparency, ridwell.com backslash transparency, where you can see, we believe everybody deserves to know where their stuff goes. This is a level of transparency that really is not standard across the recycling space at this point. We think it, we think it should be. We understand it's challenging and that there's very good reasons why other people aren't able to do this. But we do have a trust, trust deficit among the public where they just don't believe that doing a little bit more is actually going to have an impact. And so our goal is if we can push the ball forward on transparency and really show people that like, look, you can have faith that doing that little bit of extra collectively well will be really helpful and have an impact. So we, we make it all this clear. And again, because there's different items collected and we work with different partners in, in the different cities where we operate. We have a separate sort of group and full disclosure for, for each of the markets that we're. So I'm going to sort of wrap up here. We are, you know, we are really committed to regulatory compliance. Unfortunately, a lot of the regs just weren't written with a business like ours in mind and we don't, we don't sort of fit and we, we get that. You know, we, as we've said to others, we really don't believe that state law allows the presence of a monopoly franchise contract for garbage collection to prohibit us from operating. But that said, we want to work with the garbage haulers. We believe we're completely complimentary. We believe we're helping solve one of the biggest challenges that they face, which is contamination in their co-mingled recycle bins by keeping some of the most problematic items out of those bins. So we're, we're really looking for a partnership. We don't see any clash where, where we, we believe that this should all be a space where we're working toward the same goal. And, but you know, that said, people are concerned. They see us, we look different. Where, where do you all fit? And so we've been trying to, again, that's why I really appreciate opportunities like this to really get it all out there and share, share what it is that, that we're doing so that folks can really understand where we fit and how we could be helpful to the residents of the community. So again, we've tried to engage with jurisdictions before we launch, make sure that like, everybody was clear on what it is that we do and what we don't and why we believe that under certain sets of regulations, we should be allowed to operate and how we fit. Some of those have resulted in longer discussions. Some haven't gone well. Some have gone better. You know, there's been a sort of varied set of responses, is different jurisdictions have tried to navigate the different interpretations of the law and different interests that are involved. Again, we don't see any conflict with anybody because we're not doing anything that anybody is currently doing. We're not infinging on every, anybody else's contracts or territory or anything like that. So I'm here today to say we are open to, we are open to ideas and opportunities on what fits. You know, again, we've had ideas floated, everything from, you know, the, what, what the Portland City Council did, which was just clarify their code that anything that's not collected by the haulers for recycling and reuse falls outside of that regulated system and that as long as, you know, we meet certain criteria and you can certainly add criteria that makes sense for your community to say, look, you gotta, you know, gotta be taking it to a regulated facility, gotta submit reports. We're in favor of all that. We have, we're not, we're not concerned about being transparent or reporting on what it is we're collecting and where it's going. We're happy to do all of that. Other, there's been discussions in other communities about some type of permit process, like a new permit that would be created for companies like ours. And, you know, I would emphasize that, you know, we are, we, we certainly were a business and, you know, the idea of some type of exclusive contract, which has been a discussion in another community where there would be a specific sort of franchise style contract for our service that we could provide or somebody else can provide. We're not, we're, we're happy to entertain that idea, but we actually think that this is a space that needs innovation. You need, you need new ideas. You need incentives for people to come in. And, you know, there's definitely items that we have not found partners for or that we haven't come up with. And there's going to be other people that are going to have better ideas on how you could reuse or divert things that aren't included in our service and are still going into the, into the landfill, potentially unnecessarily so. And, and so creating a little bit of regulatory space. Again, it's not, we're not suggesting anybody should throw the doors wide open and allow anybody to come in and do whatever they want. But creating that room for, for new ideas and new entrepreneurs to come in and say, hey, you don't need to be throwing this away. I can take it and make sure it gets reused or recycled. And we, we do think there's a lot of, we think there's a lot of value, even if that means more competition. For us, I think that's great. You know, the, one of the haulers has set up a very similar competing product to ours across the river in Vancouver, Washington. And it's great. You know, people should, people should have options. And if they can do it better than we can, that's just going to force us to up our game and do it a little bit better. You know, we're, because this is an optional service and we're talking about items that, you know, we don't really, we're unlike the sort of traditional waste industry where we are not, we're not making money off of the materials that we are collecting. We are providing a service. So it's just a very different business model. It's an optional service. And as I think I may have mentioned last time, our strong hope is that many of the materials that are included in our service, such as plastic film, we hope technology improves and that those items can start going into the co-mingled recycle bins. And at that point, then no longer part of our service because that becomes part of the basic service that's provided by the franchise certificate holders. That, we totally agree with that. You know, it's really like, how do we push the ball forward and make some progress and enable people who are interested in doing a little bit more to be able to do so. So with that, you know, we have been welcomed by a whole lot of communities and the places where we operate were, you know, we're, we're proud to have dozens of communities across the region and now in Colorado where, where we have been, we have been welcomed and we are operating. Our members do love us. They really do. We've been kind of shocked by the level of support that we've gotten. You know, we have over 20,000 people in the greater Portland area signed up in less than a year. And people, households. And, you know, we'd love to continue to offer that to more communities in the greater Portland area. Again, you know, it really, it comes back to, to this idea that Owen and Ryan had of like, hey, can we make it easier for people to do the right thing? And, you know, again, there are Dropbox opportunities and ways that people can deal with a lot of these things, but the reality is that people expect to be able to do things from home today and, and creating the option for people to take advantage of a service like ours so that they can do a little bit more. We believe is, 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 is good for the environment. It's good for empowering new entrepreneurs and new ideas in this space so that we can begin to make more progress on our waste reduction challenge. So with that, welcome. Any questions that you all might have? And again, we just thank you for your time before I shut up.
Thank you, Caleb. Can you stop sharing? Thank you so much. I'll open it up to questions or comments to the council.
Question?
Sure. Go ahead.
Do you have any garbage haulers that have come together with you to work together on this? In other words, is it an op, is it an option with any of the haulers to add your service to an account, you know, residential account that already exists as an option?
We, we would be happy to do that. We haven't figured out sort of the mechanics of that yet anywhere. But we, but we had some discussions last fall about sort of what a joint agreement or a partnership might look like. It hasn't borne fruit yet. Unfortunately, we have largely faced sort of hard opposition and efforts to kind of push us out of the market entirely from the haulers. I've tried to open up conversations. They haven't gone anywhere yet, but, but we are certainly, we're, we're certainly open to that. Again, I think part of the challenge is just creating an environment where, where new ideas can, can come in is, is one of the challenges was with really sticking to a fully closed off franchise model where nobody can pick anything up for recycling, even if it's stuff that isn't being picked up for recycling as part of the hauler's program.
Great. Then the next hand I see up is Kate Moore.
Hey there. Thanks for presenting tonight. Can you tell us what plastic film entails? Cause I can think of a whole, or maybe what it doesn't entail would be easier, but I can think of a lot of different things.
Yeah, it is. So plastic film, I've learned a lot about plastic film and probably not as much as I need to know. But plastic film is, it's a whole wide variety of, of products. So it's everything from your Ziploc bags, the things you can imagine, your Ziploc bags, your, you know, your grocery bags, that are sort of the obvious ones that jump to mind, although folks today don't have as many of those. But the wrap on products that get mailed to you, the Amazon bubble wrap mailers or the, the pillows. That's all plastic wrap. And so that's actually where we've seen a lot of the volume is particularly as people have shifted to ordering into home, that all of these things come with various degrees of wrapping. And so that's a lot of the, that's a lot of the volume. There's a lot of food containers that are, that are also plastic wrap. Some of those are recyclable. Some of them aren't though, interestingly. So as I learned not too long ago, your dried cranberries from Trader Joe's come in what looks to be like a nice plastic wrap. Turns out that's actually like five different kinds of plastic, like melted together that really isn't recyclable. The same way that interestingly like your Amazon mailer, even if it's covered with labels, that is recyclable. And so it's a great question because it's one of the things that, that our membership model allows us to do is to really provide people with detailed information of like, hey, see this? This we can recycle. See this? We can't recycle this. And we've really invested very heavily in a, in a, in a member service team that is available by text, phone, email. And we encourage people to send us pictures of the items that they are wondering what to do with. And sometimes the answer is, hey, that just needs to go in the landfill. You know, sometimes people send us pictures of like eyeglasses and they're like, can you take these? Like, no, but there is an organization that recycles eyeglasses that, that, you know, is in the Portland area that you and so that's the kind of guidance. Again, that's why we really see ourselves as a waste production service, not as a like recycler. That, that our goal is less focused on individual materials and more about how do we help people divert stuff that's in their house that would otherwise go in the landfill and find a good home for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next hand I see up is Smart.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Thanks Caleb for the addition. I mean, again, I, I've been in the recycling business myself in the past and part of what brought me out to the Portland area, but mine was mainly focused to, on electronics and other things that come out of the office environment or even the home environment. So again, great, great kudos to you and the team for what you do. You're not only helping the environment, you're creating jobs, you're creating awareness and things like, thank you for what you do. And I don't know if I missed it. Did you mention something about the subscriptions? Like, is there like a fee to the subscription or what keeps you guys going? I mean, you're not doing it for profit or you're not getting anything out of it. So how do you, what, what, what's the revenue that's driving you?
Yeah. Great, great question. And I apologize. I did kind of jump over that. So we are a subscription based service. And so households will sign up and they can choose a one month, three months, six month or one year subscription. You get a slight discount on, on the, the longer the commitment that you make. So I think it's 12, 14 or $16, 16 if you're just on a month to month. And then slight discounts as you sort of make a longer commitment. And, and you're exactly right. Our, our, the business model is entirely based on that subscription membership fee covering the cost of the service that, that we are providing. And, you know, we do get paid and we're very open about this. We get paid a, a small amount for the plastic film. That small amount basically covers the cost of the shipment of getting that down to Trex. And similarly with the clam shell. So on both of those, we make a little bit of money, but quite frankly, it's a pretty nominal amount of money. The cost of the, the, the business model again is really based on, on providing that subscription service. And we do, we allow members to cancel their memberships at, at any time. They can get a refund or donate their membership to another household who is, for whom the, the cost is prohibitive for reciting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Last up is Micah.
Well, to be honest, my question was pretty much along the lines of Smarts. So you but I did want to thank you for the presentation and also for what you're doing. This is a, a really neat service and hope that we're able to make this, make this work in this area as well.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Again, we are, we're, we're open to, you know, which we, we understand there's different policy approaches that, that make sense. Or we would just encourage you to lean into a policy approach that allows some new entrance to come in, even if it's through a permit or some type of, you know, with some oversight. But that you're allowing sort of new ideas to come into this space. And in a way that, again, we believe completely protects all of the services that that the franchise garbage haulers are providing. And really just looking at those, how do we, how do we continue to chip away at those items and look for new ways to divert things from the landfill?
Thank you. So just anecdotally, Caleb, I'll share with you. So I attended on behalf of our former mayor, the Washington County Mayor's kind of group meeting, if you will. And anecdotally, there was a lot of support for Ridwell at that meeting across the board of Washington County. And I think for anyone kind of looking at, you know, social media and kind of what's, what's been going on, there's just a big ground swell of of support and it's clear that Washington County residents really want, want you guys to come here. I know last night, Washington County had a work session where you guys were on the agenda. I haven't heard anything from that, but I look forward to kind of getting some updates out of that. And one, one thing that had been discussed was is there anything to do? And I guess just to bring for anyone listening in or for anyone on council who who might not be aware. So Washington County is currently looking into kind of this, this policy permitting kind of issue right now. And so so across the county, there is not yet a opportunity for kind of Ridwell to come in just under the blanket of the county. I think that's kind of an accurate, very short summary of where we are with things, but but they're working on it, right? And and so I think here for us, we need to also have discussions amongst this group about, you know, where assuming King City wants Ridwell to come in, how would that happen, right? So that that kind of conversation will take place, obviously not tonight, but in the future. So one thing is what can be done in the interim for Washington County residents, right? Here in King City, I know someone had kind of approached a discussion at the mayor's meeting about having a Ridwell Dropbox just to start getting this idea of right, connecting the brand with kind of the service. Is that something that can take place relatively quickly or is that something you're looking at or what? How can you serve Washington County in interim, I guess, is really my question?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So yes, 100% we are looking at whether we can stand up some Dropboxes. I will just be very candid, we like a lot of others across a number of industries. We've been struggling a little bit lately with just staff being out ill and making sure that we're maintaining our our service to the folks that that are currently members. That said, we are actively exploring whether we can stand up some Dropbox opportunities or drop off opportunities in over the next couple of months to begin, again, providing that opportunity for folks that are unable to currently enjoy the service. You know, again, I think there was an interesting discussion at that work session yesterday about whether there was an emergency sort of rule that could be passed at the county regarding for for residents of the unincorporated areas of the county that would enable us to operate while they worked on sort of a longer term solution. I'll be very candid, they, they, the county commissioners did seem to be heading toward giving the garbage haulers sort of the right of first refusal to provide this as an optional service, looking for the reasons I've outlined tonight. We, you know, not only do we think that's, it's bad for Ridwell and that we would be prohibited then potentially from providing the service, but just generally we think that that unnecessarily restricts the ability for new ideas to to come into this space and that county and local goals can be achieved through the permitting process. So that's sort of the lay of the land. I would also just flag it, and again, I apologize, I'm sure you're aware of this, but you know, the county, I understand cities are sort of looking to the county for guidance. It is, of course, up to the cities to set the rules for collection of materials within within their city. And so, yes, the county sort of can provide a guidepost, but ultimately, everybody's going to be I've decided whether to participate or follow or go their own way. And so again, we're certainly still hopeful that the county will have a slightly different path and and open things up a little bit in terms of allowing us or others to come in and provide a similar service. We also, as I mentioned, like we were setting aside that we don't believe that that there's been a proper interpretation of county code. And that has been an ongoing discussion with them that that we anticipate will need to get resolved somehow, because we, we don't read the state law the same way, but our goal is to try to develop a positive relationship with folks and if at all possible. And so, again, you all will have the ability to set code or make modifications to clarify any ambiguities or concerns in your own code. And we would be more than happy to work with you all on what that process should look like going forward.
Wonderful, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? I know we are well over our allotted time on the agenda. However, given that Caleb had attended our last meeting, I thought it was important to give him a little extra time to wrap up since this is now twice he's, he's joined us to give this presentation. So does anyone have any additional questions before we we let Caleb go on about his night? All right, doesn't look like it. So Caleb, thank you so much. We really appreciate it and we look forward to continued discussions.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for your time. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we are going to open it up to our public forum. So one thing to note for those participating at home is that you will see on our agenda, we have added a little more explanation to open in forums, so I encourage you to read the agenda. But at this time, the council will be happy to receive your comment pertaining to items on the agenda, including questions, suggestions, complaints and items for the future. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. This is the time that you are going to want to either indicate by raising your hand or sending a message to Ronnie that you would like to speak. We need some elevator music while we are on hold. Get your daughter, get your daughter to play the guitar, Mike.
If anybody would like to go ahead and raise their digital hand and the attendees lips that will bump you up on my list so I can see you. Any public comments going once? Going twice? Council president, I have no public comments at this time.
All right, so we'll close open forum and move on to unfinished business of which I note none. So unless I am told otherwise, do we have any unfinished business that didn't make the agenda tonight? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to new business. So up first on new business is going to be our city council appointments. As most of you should be aware that we have two open seats now on the council to fill. We have three applicants. Mike is going to go back over the procedure on how we're going to call the vote tonight on this. So Mike, why don't you go ahead and explain how we're going to do this?
Good, you mean councillor. So the way that our code is written is that since we have two open spots, each councillor can cast two votes. So that will be a total of 10 votes cast. I can't see how that can break into a three way tie. But there is the remote possibility that we could get a two way tie. In the case of a two, a two way tie, the candidate that received the most votes will be left out of the second, and then there'll be a runoff between the remaining two candidates for the last position. Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to start randomly. I've got the Hollywood squares going. So just bear with me as I go through here. Councillor President Fender, you will be the final vote to have on this, but everyone else will just go through here. Smart, I hope I I don't put you on the spot here. And what I'm going to ask you to do is give me your two selections for the two seats. And then I'm going to just tally it here on my docket and then at the end we'll tally them up and then we'll see who gets appointed. You're muted right now, buddy. I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, hey, what are we to get started, right, Mike? Well, great candidates, right? I mean, again, we have, we've had you know, candidate present to us, their answers to the questions that we had. And they're all very passionate about joining this team, this group that we have. And they've been in the community for a period of time to know what we've been doing. And they've also come to understand what it takes to be part of this group and commitment that's been asked of them, you know? So not an easy thing. I mean, great, great resumes, great, great answers to the questions and great participation in our community, you know? So all these individuals are worthy of the position that if we, I wish we had more than the two, you know, we'll take them all, right? Again, very challenging for for one to actually say, but it ranks higher than the other. But I, for me, I think they're equally ranked right now. They're all on the same same, if you want to call it a bridge, right? Right now, it's just having that. Whenever they both have to get that person to cross the bridge, I come over to the other side and join this group is what we're looking for right now. So for me, I know it's, it's not hard to interpret, it's not like trying to come up with a way to actually put anyone in any box situation, but actually looking at the travel, the path that everyone, each and individual of them have gone through to be where they are today and then get into the point of showing interest to be part of this group. You know, so I want to say, I was trying to pull up my vote here. Where'd you go? Oh, no, I have the wrong team opened. Okay, this is not good, sorry.
We have three candidates, Smart.
Yeah, yeah.
You have all three of them?
Yeah, I would. So, so for me, I'll say when that turns out to be kind of if not then for the other, for the person that's not given the opportunity, who always have opportunities that always come up, right? So I would say I am going to so my two votes are for Lori and Mark. Okay. And again, again, not an easy decision, because they've all done great things for the community, they've all done great things that we've seen based on what we've seen right now that they've shown to us. And so I will say they've all had good track records, right? Majority of us on this, on this, on this council today have gone through the route, they've all been traveling, you know, joining a team or being on the planning commission or some type of service somewhere, you know? So I think it's a a good, it's a good resume that they all have. So again, those are my, those are my votes and I hope everyone kind of sees it from the way I'm rambling here, it's not an easy thing to
There will be no hard feelings, Smart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Smart. All right, Mike, who do you need next?
I've got councillor Moore next.
Hey, everybody, I echo what Smart says, I, the interviews were fun. I really liked hearing what everybody had to say. And actually, Smart, my decision process was kind of similar to yours. And I also would like to select Lori and Mark as my choices to join the council. And I'm looking forward, no matter what happens, to continuing to working with, continuing to work with all three candidates. So that's a good thing.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you, councillor Moore. I have councillor Paulson.
As both Smart and Kate have have noted, we had three very strong candidates here, all of which are very involved in the community. So it makes it a tough decision. But I believe I'm going to stick with kind of the approach that our now former mayor had kind of laid out of kind of moving through these committees. And then when these opportunities come up, that those people get an opportunity within the council. However, I would would absolutely encourage all three of you to to run for office in the next election. But my choices for the appointments are Lori and Mark.
Thank you, Mica.
That's a majority. Councillor Thompson, you are next on the list.
That's the majority, do I need to vote?
I think you have to.
Well, if that's the majority, then I am voting for Mark and Joe.
Thank you. And President Fender.
All right, well, again, I'll, I'll bring up the rear on this vote by, again, thanking Lori, Mark and Joe for your continued commitment to King City and all that you do. And I also will continue the the kind of tradition that we've, I think, built up in this council where we we recognize kind of past participation and kind of look at that. And so for that, I'm going to vote for Lori and Mark and also say I'm very excited for Joe's leadership in the planning commission, because there's a lot to do this coming year. So and then, Mike, why don't you? When, when we are done with this, what's the next? Because all three candidates came from the planning commission, will you walk us through those next appointments that need to be noted for the planning commission as well?
So the next piece that will need to happen for the planning commission is now we'll have two vacancies on that commission that we'll need to fill. So we'll have to go through the application process similar to what we did last time. And then the city council will need to appoint additional planning commissioners. Ronnie's got his hand up because he's got the process ironed out.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna pause on that real quick because I jumped, I jumped the gun. So first, let's congratulate, I'm assuming, Mike, your tally is to confirm that both Lori Petrie and Mark Manilis has been appointed as our two new councillors. Is that your tally?
That's correct, and I've just sent them promotion to panelists request. So hopefully they're joining as panelists now. And we still have to swear them in.
Mike, we also need a, we need a motion in to appoint them to the council.
I move that we appoint Lori Mark Manilis to the city council.
I need a second. I hear Shawna as a second, Mica is our first. All those in favor, raise your hand, please.
On a, because of the shared screen, hang on, I have three four, five, could, five, zero.
All right, congratulations to Lori and to Mark, and we welcome you onto the council. And Joe, again, we really thank you for coming out. This was a very difficult decision this time around there. So you guys did not make it easy, but we are so happy, Joe, to have you continue on. And like I, like I just said, there is some, there's a lot of work ahead of the council or excuse me, the planning commission. So and then Ronnie, why don't you walk us through? Because I'd like, I'd like to see those appointments on the, we need to get those started right away, so.
So for the next, so that Mark and I know Lori was on the budget committee too. Mark, were you on the budget committee too? No. All right, so I believe that makes
Mark was on planning commission.
Planning commission, right. So there's two openings on the planning commission and one opening on the budget committee. Both of those will have to be a 30 day notice out to the public and newspapers, just saying that. Both of those will have to be a thirty day notice out to the public, uh, and newspapers, just saying that, um, please apply the affiliates to position, or the the positions that are open. Um, so thirty days, that would put us March for appointments, if we do it the same way that we did it for the council, right?
Okay. Great. Alright, well, let's get cracking on that, cause
Yeah, uh, those, those notices will be going out tomorrow and will par- probably be published either Friday or Monday.
Alright, so before we take the oath of ahas, I'll just take the opportunity to kind of remind everyone here and everyone who is listening in to, uh, apply for those open positions, share with your friends and family and neighbors, and, um, you know, try to get, um, interest in, uh, having good candidates apply. We always need really good candidates, obviously, and, uh, half the battle is the application, so get your application in, right? So, and with that, let us do the exciting ceremonial Zoom administration of oath, because there's nothing like pomp and circumstance on a little Zoom screen. So Lori and Mark, welcome, and, uh, Mike, I'll hand it over to you to administer the oath.
Alright, Mark, I think I'll do you first since you had the, uh, most votes there. So if I could just have you raise your right hand and, uh, repeat after me. And I'll have little pauses and breaks, but, uh, I state your name.
I, Mark Manillis.
Do hereby solemnly swear
Do hereby solemnly swear
That I will to the best of my abilities
That I will to best of my abilities.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will support
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
Congratulations, Counselor Manillis.
A virtual.
And Counselor Petrie, soon to be here, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lori Petrie.
Do hereby solemnly swear
Do hereby solemnly swear
That I will to the best of my abilities
That I will to the best of my abilities.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
The duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
And that I will support
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
And the ordinance of the city of King City.
Congratulations, Counselor Petrie, welcome.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome. We look forward to serving with you both. So up next, now that, uh, that , uh, Counselor Petrie and Counselor, Counselor Manillis have joined us, it is now time for our officer appointments. So, Mike, do you want to walk us through how we're going to take the votes for that?
So with the officer appointments, can we get rid of this? Um, agenda share screen thing, perfect, thanks. So with the officer appointments, uh, the two main office appointments that we have is the mayor and president. These are the two that are, uh, signatories on our accounts and have other duties outside. We also have treasure appointments and, um, uh, I think that was where we stopped, although that's not part of our code, but that's the appointments that we have. The treasurer person usually comes in and goes over financials with Mira and reports back to the council. We don't necessarily need to do that tonight. I think we kind of dropped it off last time because we felt it wasn't necessary. Um, but we do need a mayor and a president. So, um, the way that this goes is that I need a nomination and a second to a nomination for an appointment or election two, and then it's voted, uh, by the council. So, um, for the, so we could start with the office of mayor. And then I will ask for a nomination, and then we would have to have a second to that nomination and a vote.
I would like to nominate, um, President Fender as our next mayor of King City.
Second.
There was a race.
Alright, so I have a nomin- I have a nomination and a second. Uh, all those in favor of appointing Counselor Fender as mayor, please raise your hand. I've got
I'm gonna vote for myself.
You can't vote for yourself, so I'm gonna say it's six, zero with one abstention.
Alright, fine, I'll abstain. Thank you, everyone.
Next, yeah, thank you, congratulations. Uh, next I need a nomination for council president.
I'd like to nominate Micah Paulson.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second to nominate, uh, Counselor Paulson as council president. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. I have a six, Counselor Paulson is abstaining, so congratulations, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you.
So Mike, even though it's not on the agenda, uh, can I, I'm gonna move, let's see, we'll have to do a motion, I'm gonna move to add a nomination for treasurer at this time. And, uh, I will just say that I would move to have Smart O'Toole act, serve as our treasurer. So I guess I, I probably have to break it up. Uh, given that we've all read our new books of Robert Rules, I will leave it with, I'm gonna move to add, uh, the treasurer on to the appointment on the agenda. Would anyone join me in that motion?
I'll second.
All those.
All those in favor of adding that to the agenda? When, I have a, you know, you can vote Smart to add it onto the agenda because we're gonna vote on you next.
Yeah, right.
So I have seven, zero for adding it to the agenda, so therefore it's added.
Alright, thank you. Now, I will now move to appoint Smart O'Toole as our treasurer.
And I'll second.
Hang on, too many motions and seconds. Alright, so all those in favor of appointing, uh, Counselor O'Toole to the, uh, treasurer position? I have a six, zero, zero with, or six, zero, one with an abstention in Mr. O'Toole, thank you very much. And, uh, Smart will run you through the financials, uh, call you and entort you with numbers every now and then.
Right, perfect. Alright, so before we move on, I, uh, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank you all for your confidence in me to serve as mayor. I know it comes as no surprise to anyone here because I've made it been known probably for five years that, uh, I wanted to serve this city that I do love so much, but I don't take this appointment lightly. And I'm very proud and honored to be able to serve the residents of King City in this capacity. So I thank you all, and I thank you all for your continued service. So, uh, with that, um, council committee appointments. Um, are we gonna move into these? Mike, are we ready to go ahead and go run through these appointments? So as a reminder to our new counselors and to those kind of watching from home, is, uh, each of us take appointments on various committees across, uh, the region. Uh, these committees have varying, uh, these committees have varying, uh, time constraints and commitments. Um, we have some that, right, people have from, uh, thank you. I just had a bouquet of flowers delivered into, into my office. I apologize for my rambling, but I take, I take this new appointment very seriously. So, uh, with that, I just wanted to offer to those who have appointments already, some of the appointments, it's important to have continuity. There's a big learning curve on some of these committees. They are somewhat difficult to move on. If however, you have found in the past that maybe the committee is not for you, or that you would like to kind of move on to a different direction, let's kind of think of that, but I'd like to go through the, the appointments and, um, try to keep some continuity. So, Mike, why don't you start running us through them, and Ronnie? And, uh, we will need first and alternate, alternates, right?
Yep, so bear with me here because it's pretty laborious task to get through all this. So, uh, most of you should have your, uh, packets in front of you, right? So we will start, this is on the, uh, committee appointments at the top. It says governmental organizations related to King City, uh, city council representatives. Uh, the very first one that we have is the WCCCA, this is the nine, one, one. Uh, right now, uh, we have Chief Happola sits on this, and the primary from the council is Counselor Thompson. Do we want to remain, retain that?
Chief Shawna, any change? Are you guys happy with that?
I'm happy to, um, stay on it. Um, Chief, you, you're actually now on the, the executive board? Or the, the board of directors?
Yeah, CEO board.
Okay, CEO board, so does that get in the way with you also being an alternate for the board of commissioners? Or is that not a big deal?
Good question, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't think it does because he reports back and just lets us know what's going on, and the, the whole idea is to have eyes and ears at these councils.
Yeah, and I, um, I'm at pretty much every meeting, so I haven't had to call on Ernie yet. So I'm happy to stay on that committee if you'd like me to, mayor.
Perfect, I think, I think that would work well, just, and then, um, uh, and Mike, I, the link through, this isn't working well for me, so I don't know what, I can't pull this quite up yet to run to the next appointment. So I'm gonna have to have you shepherd us through the appointment.
The next one
Do you want to just share your screen?
Oh yeah, I want to share the screen, that, that would be good.
Yeah.
Or Ronnie, maybe you share your screen so Mike can work off his count, his computer.
Yeah, give me just a second here.
So then, the next office is the, uh, technical advisory committee for that, but that's a staff position, so we have, um, our IT guy and chief on that as well. Uh, the next one after that is the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Uh, right now, we had Mayor Gibson and President Fender. I'm saying, thinking that we have an opening here. Typically, this is the mayors, the Washington County mayors that meet with this. Uh, so this would probably be primary, would need to be, um, Mayor Fender.
And, and Micah is the alternate?
Yeah.
Mike, does that work for you?
Yeah, that, that works for me.
Okay.
The next is the WCC Technical Advisory Committee. This is a, uh, staff advisory position that meets on the Thursday before the WCCC meetings typically, and so, uh, myself and Dave are on that one. Um, the next one after that is the WCCC Policy Advisory Board. Uh, currently, we had Counselor Paulson and Mayor Fender as an alternate.
I'd love to fill one of those spots if either one of you needs to roll off for, for any reason.
Stay on this if that's okay, um, especially because we are literally a week from tomorrow or, uh, the presentations and voting for the, um, the funds, so I'd like to stay on.
I, I also think this is a good one for potentially maybe, um, uh, another counselor, even maybe, uh, Mark or Lori. The, the CDBG, it, it's a little bit of a long learning curve. And so I think this is a good committee to shadow because it, this is out of all of the committees. This is the one committee, it's hard to just drop in as an alternate if Micah can't do it. You kind of need someone to buy in to being, um, on the committee as well for a while. This, this committee specifically looks at, um, community grants. And so there's a lot of grant, grant review, discussion, presentations and voting. Um, but it's all done in a very particular way. So, I, I am gonna go ahead, I was the alternate simply because prior to Micah being on it, I was our, uh, CDBG liaison for a couple of years. I'm gonna go ahead and drop off, and I think this is a good one for either someone who is interested or even, uh, maybe for one of our new counselors to join, just because, uh, there's a kind of a long lead time into it.
Well, if Counselor Moore wants to jump on it, it's not an easy task. Are you, you up for that, Counselor Moore?
Um, so, we have meetings, where did it go, the second Thursday in, of each month? Micah, tell me, tell me more.
Yeah, usually it's, uh, everything is still on Zoom now. Uh, we have not gone back to in-person, but it is every, uh, it's the second Thursday of every month. It starts at seven PM, and it's all, like I said, all Zoom. Uh, then in January, we have an all-day, uh, meeting on the twenty-seventh this, this year. That's usually at the end of, uh, January, and that's for the presentations of those who are applying for the CBDG grants. And, um, and then over that next weekend, then we complete, uh, voting online for, uh, basically raiding the presentations and, uh, and also the written material that we've received on these, uh, proposals. To, to vote on where the funds go. And, uh, but it is, it's pretty intensive, the meetings are usually two to, we've had a couple there, three hours long, uh, every year. Um, a lot of material to go through, but, um, uh, from a personal standpoint, I think it's a very rewarding committee to be a part of. So I would definitely encourage anybody who, who is interested in this, this area to, uh, to join it.
Yep, I would love, I would love to have a shot at that, if everybody's okay with that.
Right, that's great.
Alright.
It's a great, it is a great meeting, and back, uh, it's a great way to meet other, um, kind of county, other city leaders, because, uh, I, I, it's one of the more fun committees, it's just time, it's a little more time consuming, but you will enjoy yourself for sure.
It's definitely an, an interesting one too, because I, I noticed that, uh, I have a lot of crossover between that and the small cities meeting. Uh, because, uh, or the small cities group, because there is, um, a, a number of the, the small Washington County cities that are included in that group as well.
So the next one is the, uh, Technical Advisory Committee for the King City Master Plan, which is just now starting to pick back up, and hopefully, as soon as we finish the contracting with 3J and SCJ, uh, we should be moving forward here. Uh, we just finalized paperwork with Metro last week. So now we just have to finish our contract with 3J and we should be good to go. So right now I've got Counselor Paulson and, uh, Plank Commissioner, uh, Bellows on that one. Is that okay, Keep?
It's fine with me.
Alright, uh, the next one is the Stakeholder Advisory Committee. Uh, this one, we don't have council representation on, but I'd like to
That's been me.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say we.
I think I was on that one as, uh,
Yeah, that's what I thought as well.
Yeah, so we'll need, um, we'll need another planning commissioner representative
Yeah.
on there.
Um, we can ask at the next Plank Commission meeting who wants to fill that position.
Mike, is there, is there a planning commission meeting on the agenda scheduled, or is it, are we still kicking it out for review of? Or like, not, you know, for review, but you know what I mean?
We haven't had anything for the Plank Commission lately, because we've just been in this holding pattern for the last four months. And we really haven't gotten any sort of, uh, material or documents for them to review and, and break open yet. So, uh, we have been in a holding pattern until this thing gets wrapped up, and then we're hopefully have another meeting with them next month or so.
Alright.
My guess is February, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and MCC?
MAC Board, that's our communications group. They're the ones, uh, uh, videoing our conference right now. So, uh, right now, we had Counselor Platt and Counselor Paulson. It's an open shot for anyone for the primary unless, uh, Counselor Paulson Mark? Mark? All right, thank you, Counselor Manellos. And uh Counselor Paulson, you still good?
Yeah, I can remain the alternate on that.
Right. Uh next is the City of Tiger Water Advisory Board. Counselor Ocholi uh sits on this as the primary and Counselor Moore as the alternate.
It took them like six months to let Smart into the Zoom meeting. I think, I don't know if we want to uh, I don't know if we wanna throw off the balance there. Smart, are you good uh continuing on the waterboard?
Yes, I'm good.
Smart has never needed me, so if anyone, low commitment alternate.
Low commitment, I'll see, this is great, all right.
All right, well, I guess we'll just keep it on as is unless I hear otherwise. Um, next is Southwest Quarter Plan. This has been really quiet lately. I haven't heard anything on this front for, gosh, I want to say a year and a half, maybe? It's been at least that long.
Communication on it.
And I also haven't heard for the short session, I, I, we, I think we would have heard by now if there was some plan. So I um, m- maybe we table that for now and then kind of revisit if, if anything kind of comes back up, Mike, but.
Well, unless Counselor Paulson and Thompson are good to go, uh low, low demand. We can just keep it, if it pops up, we can bring him in.
I'm happy to stand alternate on it.
Small cities, we had uh Counselor Paulson and Counselor Ocholi.
I, I do like that one, but I, I'm, it looks like I'm on a lot of these. So if there's anybody who wants to take, to jump into that role, I, I would happily allow that.
Yeah, I would be happy to jump in there.
Lori, I was gonna suggest this one, this perfect. And then as an alternate, do we, Smart, do we want to keep you as an alternate? Or this is also one that when uh, I, I do think, and I think one thing I would ask Lori is um, if there are small, I mean, we all get the invitations for all of the small city meetings. So I do encourage all of us, especially uh i- if we're able to, I, I would encourage all of us to attend the meeting if we're able um, and just make sure, right? Because I think Micah will attest to the fact that there's usually pretty low attendance at some of these meetings. Um, but also Lori, keep us apprised of any that you really think are imperative, that there's a big showing from King City, right? Uh so.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple over the couple of years I've been on it where I've been the only city there. So, but it, there, there are other times where it's been really well attended. It's just, it's pretty hit or miss, I think mostly due to the timing of it.
All right, so then uh Smart as an alternate for that one, are you still good as an alternate?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so Smart will be our alternate on Small Cities.
All right, next is the League of Cities. Right now, we have Mayor Fender and President Paulson. You guys want to retain that one?
Well, it uh Paulson, uh Counselor Paulson goes up to primary. And then um, the alternative is a selection.
All right.
That, is it, that's how we discussed it last time when we did this.
All right, so we have President Paulson as the primary here. And then we have an open sh- open slot for the L O C.
I'm happy to be the alternate for that.
So I have Counselor Thompson as the alternate. All right.
That works.
Next is the Washington County Transportation Options. This is one that I sit on. It's basically tied in with that W C C C tack that we mentioned earlier. Next is the Metro Counselor, or sorry, Metro Council. Um, we have Mayor Fender and Counselor Moore currently.
That's been another easy alternate gig. Thanks, Mayor.
No problem. I like that.
Is that going, we might need to look at this. Mayor Fender wants to figure now if this is gonna conflict with some of your other ones, so.
Sure.
We'll go ahead and carry it forward for now, but if we need an adjustment, we can. Let's see. Next one we have is J P A C. It's Metro Joint Policy Advisory Commission. We had the mayor on this one. And Counselor Platt, so we now have two positions open for J P A C.
Okay, I think that's one that is important for continuity sake that I attend. And then having, I, I, I think anyone can have, be an alternate on this, I think, so.
You're on that as a primary?
I think. Yeah.
Okay.
I could do alternative part. One of either one of us.
Okay, I, I heard, I heard uh Counselor Petrie first, so. M P A C, this is the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. Uh they also are a element of the Metro uh Council Subcommittee that works on policy, land use policies and transportation policies and things of that nature. Right now, I have Counselor Moore and Counselor Paulson. You guys good with that?
I need to pass that on to somebody because I also have a seven o'clock to nine o'clock meeting the fourth Wednesday. And so that makes for a long Wednesday. Um, just so you guys know, we are not a part of the pil- Policy Advisory Committee. King City doesn't have a rep, we're actually an alternate. Um, so if you want to attend the meeting, you'll be attending the meeting as an alternate to um Mayor Truax from Forest Grove. And, and if you're an alternate there, you're kind of an alternate to an alternate. So um the meetings are really interesting to attend often. Um, it's kind of a preview of people that present to us sometimes. And um, so that would be a really cool thing, especially because you're already an alternate for maybe Mark or Lori to, to go jump in on. You just go and observe and that's about it so far.
Anyone?
It's, it's fun, it's great. You get some really cool information and presentations. I, I'm just not able to do five straight hours of meetings and two Wednesdays in a row. It's a little, a little tough timing wise.
Well, that's sure, I mean.
All right. I've got Counselor Petrie then, and uh Counselor Paulson, are you still good as a alternate? Did I lose him?
You're on mute, Micah.
Sorry, there was uh some screaming going on downstairs, so uh.
All right, the next is the C P O four K. Um, this is our group that meets over near the Highlands uh about once a month on a Monday night. Uh right now, I've got Mayor Fender and I had Counselor Platt, so I need uh someone to at least fill in for Counselor Platt and.
Mike, uh, can we, can we table this one for uh and add this to uh, uh our next work session? Uh, can we have a work session and add, add discussion of these? Of just a- appointments in general uh to that? I, I think this is one that we might be able to table since.
So you don't want to have a representative attached to this or no?
Not yet. I, I think I want to have uh kind of a broader conversation about C P O four K. And um, and I think it's important that we get uh representation and attendance going there. But I think there's a broader conversation that I want to have with it, and since it's not on the agenda tonight, I'd like to push it out and, and have that an- at another time, so. And what I will say is C P O four K is open to every resident within the boundary. So for those, candidly, there's much more counselors that end up going than uh we assign here. But I think uh I'd like to table a discussion about the council's presentation at C P O four K. Uh and I think that needs a nuanced conversation.
All right. Um, then the next one is uh essentially the H O As. So for the Edgewater H O A, I have Counselor Ocholi and Mayor Fender. You still good with that?
So um, I'm happy to be as an, as an alternate. Um, I would also encourage, I think, anyone else who's living in an Edgewater, so maybe um, m- Mark. So uh, typically uh I will be having a monthly meeting with all of the presidents of the H O As in King City uh in capacity as being mayor. Um, and so I think I will bow out from attending the actual homeowners association meetings in my capacity as uh, as mayor. And I will switch over to kind of that mayor's meeting. But um I think it is absolutely imperative that we have a counselor present at every single H O A meeting, so.
So uh Counselor Trulli, are you still good in primary on this?
Yes, I'm good.
Then we need an alternate?
I can, I can do that.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Manellos. All right, uh next is the Highlands. Uh right now, we had Counselor Platt, who is no longer with us, so we have a primary position, Counselor Moore, are you able to fill that?
Nope, that's the fourth Wednesday again, friends. I don't, I don't know.
Oh, the fourth Wednesday is just a busy day, I guess, across the board.
That is crazy. All right, so we have two openings then for that fourth Wednesday.
And do we have a ti- do we have a timeframe on those?
So we have Counselor Petrie and Counselor Paulson on the other one that meets on that fourth Wednesday. So uh we would need someone outside of Counselor Petrie, Counselor Paulson.
But what, what time on Wednesday does that, are the meetings?
At six thirty PM.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's over in the others. I see it. Sorry, my bad.
So anyone?
Anyone?
I suppose I could do it.
I tell you what, I'll be the alternate, how about that? Even though I just said that, I'll, I'll be the alternate um Shawna if you, if you're unable to attend that way.
Okay, thank you.
The Highland Parks, that's the same thing essentially. As the, the Highlands, so I think you get both if you go to the Highlands meeting. Uh Royal Gardens, this is a, oh, this is a condominium group down on Royalty near uh Senior Village, King City Senior Village on the other side there. Uh they have a small H O A group, uh Barry, is there contact? He's usually at the H O A meetings.
It's one year, uh you can put me down, I'm fine to do that.
If Jamie's gonna have like a, a mayor's meeting, do we have to have someone on all these smaller H O As?
It just helps to kind of have a representative at their meetings so that you can explain to the groups that are there because there's a communication gap sometimes between what happens on the council and what happens in the H O As. And just having that voice to be able to relay that information is really, we found it to be pretty vital.
And I think if you think of it, the, the mayor's meeting with the H O A presidents is really for the line of communication to kind of update both agencies as to kind of what's going on, what, you know, concerns, if there's questions, things like that. I think having a presence of the city counselors attend the H O As specifically is really about community engagement and making sure the H O A residents have a face to the city and have, start thinking about, you know, that there's a conduit to uh the city that maybe they were unknown, you know, unaware of previously. So I think that attending the meetings themselves are more for the residents within those H O As versus uh, right, and anything else, so.
So the next one is the uh King City Civic Association, that's the.
Why, did you get me down as an alternate for the Royal Gardens?
I, I have you down as an alternate. I don't think Ronnie's type two yet.
Or Ronnie, okay, thanks.
And then for the K C C A, I need a primary on this one.
Is it, on the notes, it says that you meet every other Tuesday, is that accurate?
No, we, we meet the, the second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Second and fourth Tuesday, yeah. And I, I can't really be a primary on this, at this, at this particular time, folks. But after, after June, I'd be happy to uh take on this task if you'd like, so but that, I can't, I can't do it now.
I would love to do this. I just, um, I just don't think I can commit to two Tuesdays a month. That's my only, only reservation.
Well, the, the way to think about it would be, um, so what um, what Gretchen used to do, she would come at the second meeting, because normally the second meeting is the one where we have um, a better uh open forum time, and there's just a little bit, maybe a more participation. So you wouldn't have to be, come to both, you could come to just one, really. I mean, that's one way to think of it, so.
I, if, unless anyone else wants, wants to, I'd love to, to do that.
And I, and I can be, and I, I love these H O A meetings, so I, you know, I don't know, I keep volunteering myself for all of these, but uh, we needed, if we need an alternate, you know, I'm a glutton for H O A. I'm not gonna say punishment, but I'll say H O A participation.
All right, so I've got Counselor Fender as the alternate, sorry, Mayor Fender. Next is Castle Oak South. We really haven't seen much uh happen over there. Uh Kate, that's your neck of the woods, right?
There, there, yeah, there's nothing.
So Counselor Moore, can we just put you on there? It's just the record. All right, um, and then since it's so low key, we'll just ma- make it just one primary. Next is the uh King City Condos. Um, they do have meetings every now and then, and they do come up with some um challenging items that uh we've had to deal with, but uh, anyone want to sit in on that one?
I, I'm pretty familiar with those folks. I could, I could do the condos, King City condos.
Thank you, Counselor Petrie. Next is the Rivers Edge. Uh H O A, they're the folks that are down there by Highway nine nine W and Versailles. If you're familiar with that area, they're a fairly new area. They don't have a lot of meetings though. Um, in fact, I don't think they've had more than a handful since uh starting.
I don't have any contact information for them either, or anything.
Why don't we table that one and see if we can get the lines of communication going and find out when their meetings are? And then come back and we can make an appointment, that would be my.
Keep my name on there for, for now, uh, oh what? Cuz it looks like I'm already listed on that one.
Okay, so we got Paul, uh Counselor Paulson on that. Uh the next is a part four, uh their H O A president, uh Benson Myers sits in on the mayor's meetings as well. Uh they're a small group, they're just uh off King George Drive north of the golf course there. Um, they're the uh apartments that kind of, or condos that kind of go up the, the hillside there. Um, for the most part, low key, we've had a few tree issues, a few potholes, um some sidewalk things here and there. But uh not a lot of big problems in that genre with me. Uh, do we have a volunteer that might be able to sit in on that? They meet twice a year, it looks like.
We know what time they meet.
I don't know exactly what time, but I can ask uh Benson at the next H O A.
Put me down, it's twice a year.
Thank you, Counselor Manellos. Um Imperial Court Condos, these are the groups that are just down the way from part four. Um, also on the right-hand side, it goes up the hill by King Arthur. And uh kind of swings around over toward Beef Bend, as it goes up through there, there's three layers of their. Cause it goes up through there, there's three layers of their condominiums as well.
Mike, is it, is it okay? Sorry to interrupt. Is it okay if we just table any that we don't know when, they meet? Because it might conflict with other committee appointments that we've already committed to.
That makes it fairly easy, cause I think we have a bunch here that we don't know. Is everyone in agreement with that?
That makes sense.
Agreed.
Makes most sense.
It looks like King City Garden Villas, we, looks like they might meet on the second Thursday of each month at six thirty?
Yes, they do. And I live there, so.
Oh, perfect.
And then Roseberry, you can actually, so the, typically Roseberry just throws up a sign on Macbeth, and I see it, and then I attend their meetings, so, uh, I'm happy to serve as, uh, on, on Roseberry, um, and, since we have their communication, I'll, I'll also work on getting, uh, you know, inviting them to the mayor's meeting and.
Uh, so I think the next one that we have is that Garden Villas says, counselor Petrie, did you volunteer for that or?
I kind of did. You kind of heard that, yeah. So, yeah, I would be, I usually attend the meetings anyway as a homeowner there, so I, I could certainly, be representing the council as well, so, yes.
Do we have an alternate for that one?
I would, but I have a conflicting commitment on the third Thursdays with one of my other committees. Oh, second Thursday. Oh, that, I could, sorry, I misread it. But you got it, Mark?
Alright, so our next role here is the, uh, Oregon Mayors Association. I think that, uh, typically goes to the mayor and president, so that would be, um, Mayor Fender, and President Paulson. Um, same with the next one there, uh, that's gonna be Mayor Fender, President Paulson. The West Side Economic Alliance, this is a membership thing that we buy into. Um, right now it was, uh, Mayor Gibson and I, but, uh, we're gonna have to drop Mayor Gibson. And so we'll add Mayor Fender for that one. And also counselors, I will say this, if they have an open forum, I usually forward that to you. Sometimes, there's a registration fee for those things. Just let me know. And, uh, we can get you signed up for one if you see that's like really important and you really want to be on. E- even, just so you know, even, uh, if I want to sign up for it, I still have to pay for the registration too, so. Those are usually above and beyond your membership fees. Um, Greater Portland Inc., this is one that we've discussed dropping off of, but, um, our membership goes through at least July right now. And they just actually brought in the Washington County Economic Development Coordinator, Internet Circle, so maybe we'll see a little more.
Right.
Washington County centric stuff happening in the future, hopefully, so, um, right now it was, uh, Mayor Gibson, uh, that would be attending most of these. And, uh, President Fender at that point in time, but now Mayor Fender was the alternate, so, um, I'm thinking that it would be, um, Mayor Fender as the primary at this point. And then an alternate of your choosing.
I think it makes sense for.
Counsel.
For, Micah, yeah.
I'm happy to be. Sorry, I was making sure I wasn't still muted, uh, yeah.
And I'm on as the, as a liaison, staff liaison, and I think that wraps up our council appointments. I'm actually surprised we got through that.
Yeah, no, I think that we've gotten it down, uh. Right. So, moving through, is there any, does anyone have any questions about council appointments? Any clarification needed? I think we're good. Alright, okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to September and October financials. There is action requested. We need to discuss and approve dis- or disapprove the financials. Uh, we will hear from Mike as his staff recommendation, so take it away. Or Ronnie, you were running.
Nothing too exciting to report. This is still early in the fiscal year, pretty much first quarter stuff coming out. We're way under budget on just about every line on our spending, uh, at this point in October, or toward the end of October. As you go through, uh, hopefully I have it pulled out correctly. I have, uh, the first page is the general fund. Um, does everyone have the documents in front of you? Ready for review. Uh, nothing too exciting. Our funds have started coming in, usually in October is when we start receiving, tax funds coming in. Uh, our expenditures are pretty low at this point in time in the year. Nothing too exciting to report. Are there any questions on the general fund? For those, uh, councilman Alice, counselor Petrie, uh, have you guys, are you familiar with how we do this? So the top portion, there's, there's a number of funds that King City has. And, uh, when we do the financials, it's a summary of the revenues and expenditures to that point in time. So at the very top right hand corner, you'll see the date of the financials. These financials are from October thirtieth, twenty twenty one. So that's usually your first quarter. Underneath that, you'll see a percentage of budget. That's your target. So you don't want your expenditures to exceed that thirty-three percent. Because if you are exceeding that thirty-three percent, that means you're, you're on a path to exceed your budget, right? So when we look down the line, these are our revenues. It's great. We like having our revenues up, especially this time of year, because this is when taxes are coming in, right? Um, on the other side where we have our expenditures, we like seeing our expenditures below that thirty-three percent, because the number of these expenditures will come throughout the year. Alright, everyone got that? Any major questions? Alright. So as you see, most of our, uh, percentages are really low. No, no big, uh, worry items in the general fund. Uh, the next one is the street fund. Uh, you might be, uh, familiar with the, the street projects that were wrapped up in, uh, September, October. So you see, uh, significant portion of funds coming out of there. We're still under budget for what our total, uh, expenditures are for that particular section. Although I'm sure that number has gone up since, since October when we paid those off. And you'll probably see that reflected in the November, December financials. Alright, next is the local option fund. This is the police levy. Typically, this will be transferred over to cover the police expenditures throughout the year. And, uh, we do them systematically, so that's why it's always right on key, right at thirty-three or whatever percentage that you see on Ryan's. Uh, the next one is the park development fund. This is a system development charge that is charged for all development throughout the city. Uh, it's usually around three to four thousand dollars that, uh, per, uh, family unit that goes into this fund, and pays for our park maintenance, pays for park improvements, those sort of things. Um, right now we should be pretty good, sitting pretty low. Uh, not a lot of activity throughout the winter time on parks, except for, uh, in the case of pump fails or something to that effect, which Dave has been working on to try to keep that sucker going. And that's a topic for another day. Moving on, the TDT Transportation Development Tax Fund. Uh, this is a tax that's also associated with, uh, housing and development throughout the city. That goes to our main arterial streets such as Fisher, uh, hundred and thirty-first street and Beef Bend are our three roads, and nine nine W is also one, although, nine N W is more of a, uh, regional or statewide facility. Alright, any questions on that? Alright, next one is the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. Our allotment was four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Of that, we've taken a chunk, uh, that was paid out in, uh, December, but it will not be reflected in the October. So you'll have to wait to see that reflected in, uh, the next set of financials. Moving on to the general fund. Just to repeat. Uh, okay, moving on into September. Alright, thank you, counselor Petrie. As you see here, uh, total expenditures through the month of September are only about ten percent of what we have budgeted. Uh, target here, doesn't make any sense. Oh, it's September, sorry. It does. It was a month earlier, month prior. Uh, therefore the percent of budgets less, sorry, I'm getting my months mixed up. Probably should have had this one first. Since we've already run through everything on here. Uh, is there any questions on the September financials, which basically were covered in the October financials? Making the September financials fairly moot. Any questions? With that.
I have one, I just have one doubtful account. So on page one of the October, allowance for doubtful account proceeds. Is that for fines? Is that what we discussed last time, which were the fines that are essentially uncollectible?
Yeah, we're writing.
And we're good. So I, at the next, essentially the next quarters, that's gonna be, uh, we won't see that any further on our, on our line item.
Well, I think you're still gonna have it on there. It's just gonna be a running thing, but we don't have to write off like fourteen million dollars of it.
Okay, got it, okay. Anyone have any other questions besides me?
It'll just be a smaller number, more manageable, like a seventy thousand or an eighty thousand dollar number instead of a huge million dollar number like what we did.
Right. Alright, I'll take, uh, either a motion to approve or disprove, disapprove the financials, unless there's questions or comments, discussion.
I move approval of the September twenty-one, twenty-one and October twenty-twenty-one, uh, uh, s- sorry, uh, financial statements. Unless, do we need to do that separately?
No, it's fine, just know.
I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, all those who approve, please raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, counselor Thompson, seven, I see your virtual hand. Need you?
Alright. Alright, moving right along, we are somewhat catching up on our agenda, which is nice. So Chief Hopala, what do you have for us?
Oh, just quickly, a couple of things, uh, since our last meeting. Uh, Officer John Huffman has graduated from the State Police Academy, and so he's out on the road training, with, uh, uh, sorry, just had a door open. He's out training with Officer Kazmersky right now.
Who I saw driving down earlier?
Just completing his first month of FTEP, the Field Training Evaluation Program. And, uh, he's doing rather well. He's had, uh, he's gotten exposed to a lot of calls, and so our arrest numbers are up, uh, quite a bit here. Month of January, hopefully I'll be able to give you some stats at the next meeting. And, uh, so we look forward to that. Look forward to him being out on the zone soon. Uh, provide some much needed relief for us on day shift where we can start to get some more administrative work done. And so the last thing would be, uh, just completed, uh, radio cutover, on all our car radios and portable radios countywide. And that is, uh, going from an analog radio system to a digital radio system. And, uh, it's been many years in the making. It's, uh, hasn't been flawless, but it's much improved. The clarity of the radio system is amazing. And, uh, so we look forward to that. There are, you know, been some bumps in the road, and unfortunately here in King City where there's been some, some bad coverage, and what happens is our radios get bonged, uh, so we gotta press our button to talk it. It bongs us and doesn't allow us to get out, and so we had kind of a dangerous situation yesterday. Um, where an officer is trying to get out information and wasn't able to, and a cover car had to show up and do it for him, so. Uh, it's, it's a work in progress, but, uh, it's so far so good, and, uh, they've done an amazing job. It's, you know, kudos to them. And that's about all I got.
Alright, thank you. We have, Micah has a question?
Yeah, I was just, just curious, is the analog system still going to be available should the digital system fail?
Yes, um, I think there's, uh, I know I heard the timeframe of how long it'll be available, to switch over in case something goes down, because they have had some, recently had some power failures and some other things that have happened, uh, previous where, like, last week, nine of the loans down for like five minutes. And so, uh, you know, and I, I know that there's been some explanations as to what happened there, but, uh, so far so good. But yes, it's still available for a while. Uh, I'm not sure of, and I, I can get you that information next meeting of what the, uh, cause I have the me, what I can meet CEO or Matt tomorrow. And I can ask that question to see how long we're gonna have that, but, uh, it will be up for a while. Uh, just so everything gets done, cause they aren't still working out. It are so many cell sites, around Washington County for our repeater coverage and stuff that it's amazing, but, uh, uh, yes, is the answer to that.
Any other questions for Chief? Kate Moore?
Hey, Ernie, I'm wondering, um, if you have a little more information about the mental health professional or mental health officer that, is available to different Washington County cities? I don't know much.
This is a, it, it's a, it's kind of a tough one to explain, but I'm gonna do my best to explain. So the four cities, uh, Tiger, Twolton, Sherwood. An agreement, um, where three of the cities, which is Tiger, Twolton and Sherwood, take turns every, I think it's every two weeks that a mental health clinician rides with an officer, a trained officer from each of those cities. And we're not left out. We can call and ask for, you know, the help when we need it. And so what happens is, is between three of the cities, or at least two of them, they bear the brunt of the financial aspect of funding that position. And then we, as being the smaller community, uh, what we ended up doing was I bought, um, the body armor, for the clinician and provided the radio that, uh, the clinician uses. And so that's our small piece of it. Now, this is a one-year trial, so I'm gonna guess that I'm gonna get asked to pay more. Um, coming up, it would be my guess. And so it is a hugely successful program. And it's something that allows to, oh, officers to be freed up quite a bit. Um, where we can cycle calls towards the, uh, clinician and the other officer. It is, um, you know, I've, I've said it openly, you know, I, I've always felt the FJC, the Family Justice Center, and this program are the two most important programs we've had, in Washington County since, you know, the fifteen years that I've been here. And, um, it is an amazing program that we hope once we start to staff up, and get more officers here in King City, that it will be a, a full cycle where we'll have some, we'll also have the clinician in town for two weeks. That's my ultimate goal there, would be to, to share that whole deal. Because we are just, per capita, we have some issues. You know, we have mental health issues that pop up here and, uh, that are kind of on, not, they're high in scale compared to all the other towns. And so, it's something that we, we definitely are all in for, and, uh, so don't be surprised if I come asking for more money. You know, to help us be a part of this team. Like I said, I, it's, the amount of calls and Tiger came out with some numbers that were astronomical, and, and I don't doubt the numbers at all. Sixty-five percent of their total call volume has a mental health aspect to it. And it is, it's an amazing number for the amount, cause of the amount of calls that they go on a year. Cause they're pulling between, um, eight to twelve thousand case numbers a year. And in reference, I mean, we pull like three hundred. And so it's, it's an amazing amount. And so it's, it's, uh, uh, an important thing, you know. Like I said, it's, it's the, people kind of lose sight of, you know, the, they're riding with the other officers. We were included in it, yes, we're included in it, just because we're too small. We just don't have the ability right now to have, somebody riding with, that, you know, a staff member. Once we are, I'm more than happy and, and I want us to be involved with it, cause it's just that important.
How, oops, sorry, okay, go ahead.
No, just thank you.
How much does, and not everyone, maybe not everyone knows about Wilson Parish. But he is a volunteer chaplain, and I, how, does he still serve as a chaplain to the community, or has he moved on now?
No, he still serves with us, and we actually do pay Wilson.
Oh, we do?
It's a small amount of money. And so he, so his duties kinda increased a little bit, so he is also serves WACA, the nine-one-one center, as the chaplain there. He also serves as our area's South Cities, I believe it's just South Cities, chaplain for TVF and R. And then he also serves as, I believe, the backup for, well, he's chappeling for Sherwood. He's backup for, I believe, Tiger.
And Newburgh as well, didn't he?
I'm not sure if, if he's gone down that way, and obviously he has some, some church duties too. And so he's, he's a busy guy, and so we haven't seen him as much, I know, you know, his daughter got married this summer. You know, he's got a son that goes to college back in Tennessee, so he's, he's a busy guy. And, but yeah, he's still around and he's a wonderful asset to have. I, I know I enjoy him coming into the office and sitting down with me, and, you know, he, when he gets the opportunities. And we've, and to be honest, we've kinda cut down his time with COVID. We've cut down his time that we allow him to, to be with the officers and stuff, just because I mean, as you, you all know, once we lose somebody, I mean, it's twenty-five percent of your patrol staff has gone down. And so we're trying to limit the amount of exposure. Because to be, to be honest, I mean, I was, you know, I was, I can't remember how many homes I went into recently that you know, had COVID positive people, and, and it's something that we kinda got low asleep. And now it's time to just kinda wake back up a little bit, you know, make sure everybody keeps their precautions up and keeps the masking, the gloves and all that, you know, kinda deal, but yes, Wilson's still around and, you know, valuable part of our team.
Good, perfect. Uh, well, thank you, Ernie, we want you to continue to stay safe and healthy and, right, so. Uh, any other questions for Ernie? Alright, Mike, what you got for us?
I've just been busy this month, coming out of the holidays, so we are working on the contract stuff with Three J for the expanded scope on the alternative analysis for east-west transportation routes. Did a presentation today for MTAC, Metro Transportation Group. Went pretty well, we kinda ran out of time, the big hubbub is the I-two-oh-five polling, or, or tolling. Sorry, not tolling, and how ODOT's moving ahead with this project for putting poles on two-oh-five, but not looking at any other streets or highways or providing any funding for any kind of diversion that's probably going to happen or occur with that. So that is a bit of a hot button topic, I think, for every community throughout the metro region. Because, you know, Metro is supposed to be the agency charged with transportation overview for this region. And ODOT's coming in with their tolling project and just throwing it out there. So there's a lot of people that are pretty upset and, and rightfully so. And ODOT doesn't have the answers for them, you know, because they haven't done the work yet. And so there's a lot of folks throughout Clatsop County, throughout Monoma County, Washington County. And the cities and communities that are affected by that, that are raising some serious concerns. That, one, they haven't done a financial analysis on this. Two, they haven't done the traffic study to figure out what happens with the diversion. And if they have done it, they haven't shared that information with us. They're not providing any funds to help shore up those roads where traffic's gonna get diverted to. And they haven't looked at what's gonna happen when they only do a partial tolling project on one half of the transportation routes, and then everyone diverts to the other half, right? So I think especially in Washington County, when you take away two-oh-five going up the east side. Everyone's gonna say, well, I'm not gonna pay the toll, I'm gonna take I-five, I'm gonna take two-seventeen over to twenty-six and over to four-oh-five, and then you're gonna end up with some major traffic jams on the west side of town. And the east side of town is, is gonna see that vacate, but I think that's part of our concern, we voiced it a few times. I think MTAC's going to, or IMPAC is going to try to take some of those to their policy advisory committee and then to ODOT as well. There's that, the contractor for the TSP. And the master, master plan's getting back on, we were supposed to have, we were supposed to have a meeting with ODOT engineers, DKS and ourselves tomorrow. But the DKS rep can't make it, so we had to cancel that. So we're still in this weird holding pattern on the draft transportation system plan. Trying to understand what the heck is going on with that, and trying to get some answers on how they came up with some of their information. It's, it's convoluted and it doesn't make a lot of sense, and so we're trying to make sense of it. And trying to put it into a format that can be easily digested. So, other than that, we also have a couple of grants that are floating around right now that we're trying to work forward toward and hopefully get those out. So it's been pretty busy, I know that we wanna do, look into like February and March for a goal-setting session. We usually do that once we have an idea of where the numbers are gonna be for the next fiscal year. That way we can apply goals to certain numbers and see if we can actually make that function. So I expect as soon as Mira is able to get through this CASL training. So she has been trying to familiarize herself with the new finance system. Many of you know on our audits, we always get that QuickBooks comment, so we have moved over to CASL. Which should remove that from our audit notes. And it's just gonna take a little bit of time for her to familiarize herself with that system and get up to speed. That's about where we're at, everything's kind of moving forward, but slower than what we had hoped. It's been a slow three, four months, but now everyone comes out of vacation and they're trying to get five hundred things done in a very short time, so. That's my report.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm gonna do a little bit different tonight in that, because we've just come out of the holidays and this is our first meeting of the year. If there is a counselor that has something to report, will you raise your hand and we'll do it that way? Instead of going one by one, Micah, take it away.
I just wanted to, to mention, as I did earlier with the, the CBDG. The Policy Advisory Board will be doing our, you know, voting over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll be, actually, sorry, finalizing the funding next month. So I should have a, a full report on where, where those HUD funds are going and to what projects, so.
And I, I think I say this every year, but now as mayor, I will say it again, which is there's a lot of the CBD, CDBG projects that we through kind of this all process of being a city and taxpayers pay into, and I've always wanted to have a little bit more of a presence at some of the openings of some of these projects that get funded that then get off the ground, and so I know a lot of the projects have long, right, there are several years before it comes to fruition, but please keep in mind, just any that are coming down the pipeline that you think that would be great for us as a, as a council to support and, and go and attend the opening or right, I mean, I know we're still in times of COVID, so obviously we need to be conscious of that, but I, sometimes those, those funded and completed projects don't get enough fanfare and.
Absolutely. In the past couple of years, we haven't had many like facility openings or anything like that. It's, there's been more infrastructure or support of, of programs that are, might already be in place or that have an existing infrastructure, not really doing an opening, they might be addition or something to their building, but there, there haven't been any like openings or anything like that for us to, to really attend the last couple of years. I will let everybody know when, when and if there are.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to report? That, that means you all had lovely holidays with your families and we're focusing on what you were supposed to be focusing on, so well done. Um, the only report that I will kind of make, I've, I've covered a few meetings just in the interim from when Mayor Ken resigned to now. I haven't, you know, obviously taken on any of his duties in official mayor capacity, so there isn't too much to report, because really I was just kind of a fly on the wall, kind of observing. One thing I think going forward is I have a lot of plans and exciting things and ideas, and there's lots of things that I'd like to share with all of you. So just look forward to, I'd like to set up a meeting kind of with each one of you individually to kind of talk about my vision and kind of what, you know, have, what, what your vision is and kinda get some dialogue going. So I'll be scheduling those out here over the next week or so, sending appointments over the next week. I don't expect to meet with you all in the next week, but, and then, you know, I just really look forward, we have a lot to do this year. But I'm just proud of each and every one of you, and I'm excited to work with you guys in, in this capacity. And with that, I will entertain unless anyone has anything else to add tonight before we entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I have a second? Official, look at that, right in with the, with the new counselors, I love it. Alright, all those, raise your hands, and
We got seven zero.
There we go. And again, Lori and Mark, welcome, and, you know.
Welcome, and congratulations to
Thank you.
The new president and the new mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to the opportunities.
Have a great evening.